Morning, Matt. How are you?
Great, great, great.
Good. And Commissioner Schmidt, how are you?
I'm well, thank you.
Good. So we're going to talk about elections and voting this morning. And before we get into that, let's introduce you to our members and talk a little bit about where you grew up and where you went to school and what section of the city do you call home?
So I grew up in Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, believe it or not. And I sometimes say that the only bigotry my parents raised me with is that Philadelphia is the worst place in the world, which is a view common in Pittsburgh. And it turned out about that issue and probably that issue alone, my parents were very wrong. So I grew up in Pittsburgh. Then I went to college up by Allegheny College. And then I got my PhD in political history from Brandeis University, which is outside of Boston. Then I went to work in Washington DC first for a presidential commission and then for the USGAO, the Government Accountability Office, where I was a performance analyst and leader, a senior performance analyst there. And it's the investigative arm of Congress. They audit any policies or programs or procedures, really anywhere that taxpayer dollars go to ensure that things are done efficiently and effectively and without waste, fraud, abuse, and mismanagement. Then I moved to Philadelphia in 2005, started to get involved in the political and civic life of the city, ran for city comptroller in 2009 and got beaten by a wide margin. And then ran for city commissioner in 2011. So I was elected in 2011 and then re-elected in 2015 and 2019. And they are, I think I'm jumping to the second part of your question. There are three of us in the city. The city of Philadelphia, in the city of Philadelphia, elections are run by three city commissioners that sit as the board of elections. So there's two from the majority party and one from the minority party. And in this case, I represent the minority party. It's essentially, no party can have more than two seats because otherwise you would have complete control of elections by one party. So the three commissioners are essentially who comes in first, second, and third in that election. And we run elections and anything related to elections, from voter registration to now mail-in ballot voting to Election Day itself and accounting and certification of the election results.
Okay, so in these terms are four years? This is a four-year term?
Yeah, they're four-year terms.
Okay. And as your role, how big is your team? And how do you interact with other city departments and constituents?
I just remembered one other thing I didn't mention was that I live in Roxborough. That was the last part of your question, sorry. And I lived in East Falls before that. With the three city commissioners, we each have our own staff. So I have four people in my office. And then we run a city department that is roughly 125 to 130 full-time staff. And then that's augmented during election season with temporary staff also, depending on what the need is. It might be 20 temporary full-time people or 50 temporary full-time people. This time, we'll hire a lot of temporary full-time people because of what's involved in a presidential general election. But we interact with all the other city departments. We're an independent agency in the administration, just like the city comptroller, the district attorney, the register of wills, the sheriff. We're independent of the mayor even though we run departments in the city government.
Okay. So I guess your staff are, just to familiarize people, maybe they may not be familiar with the polls and all. The staff is not who's at the polls?
That's right. We are running the central operation of the election. So when voters are registering, we're the ones, we're not registering them like knocking on their door saying, "Do you want to register to vote?" We're registering them when the applications come in online or in paper. We're registering them like processing those registrations. We're processing the mail-in ballot applications, sending out the mail-in ballots, receiving back the mail-in ballots, counting them. Anything centrally run. The rest of the city election operation on Election Day is 1703 divisions, or they're called precincts everywhere else in the United States, I think. For some reason, Philadelphia calls them divisions. But Philadelphia has 1703 precincts that typically vote out of around 830 polling places because some are kind of co-located. Some might be standalone at the church down the street. Others, there might be four or five of them in a big cafeteria or auditorium. Those on Election Day, when you go in to vote in Philadelphia or any other county in Pennsylvania, that's your local election board. And they are essentially people from your neighborhood, from your precinct for the most part, who run the election that day at that polling place. That board, just like the city commissioners, is intentionally divided up with majority and minority party or parties represented. So you have checks and balances ideally, provided you can get people to step up and work that day. It's essentially like a volunteer position. They're working 14 hours straight on Election Day. Normally, we pay them about $100 for the day. This year, I made a motion and it passed and we have the resources to do it. We'll be paying them $250 for the day because there's such a need for election board workers this cycle because of the COVID situation and because we lost a lot of our usual polling places.
Yeah, I was a minority inspector for one of my many, many years ago. And it wasn't $250, so I'm sure they appreciate that. But it is a long day.
We want to make sure we compensate people and compensate them well, especially under the circumstances. It is going to be a concern that we're sort of ruining the market. You know what I mean? It's like one house on a block sells for double all the other houses and then no one wants to sell for probably what the actual market rate might be. And in this case, once we pay people $250 instead of $100, next year, to them, it's going to be like cutting their stipend for the day in half. So they won't be happy. But right now, we have a presidential election to get.
Yeah, yeah. And it's really important. So I guess that brings me to my next question. So how is your office functioning in these times? I mean, everybody is virtual. How are you managing that?
So we never, I don't want to say had the opportunity to do that. That's a wrong way to put it. We never stopped functioning in our offices since all this really started kind of, since things started getting shut down in March. We have extended our hours so we have more people working on shifts, like an early morning to afternoon, an afternoon to evening shift. So we don't have too many people in the same place at the same time. But a lot of the work we do is done through, on secure terminals that are connected to the statewide voter registration database. And they can't be accessed remotely. Because if they can be accessed, if I can access them from my home, a malicious actor could access them from some other place as well. So when we're entering voter registration forms, when we're entering mail-in ballot applications, they have to be done on a secure terminal. So that's why it's not like everybody could just go home. Plus, all the voter registration applications, all the mail-in ballot applications, they're all here. They're all at our Delaware and Spring Garden offices. We have three floors of a building at Delaware and Spring Garden. We have five small offices in City Hall. And we have a voting machine warehouse in East Falls. So we've just been working the same way we were before, just trying to kind of space people out.
Right. So who are the other city commissioners and what is your relationship with them?
They are Lisa Deely, who is the chairwoman of our department, and Omar Sabir. Lisa is beginning her second term. Omar is beginning his third term. And Lisa's the chair of our department. I'm the vice chair of our department. And I've worked pretty well with them and the previous commissioners before them. You want the right balance, right? You don't want everyone to think the same thing, to get along too well. You want checks and balances, but you also don't want, you know, like personal fighting. You don't want distractions. You don't want the professional staff to be pulled in different directions. So it's about getting that right balance between checks and balances and not, you know, fighting necessarily.
Right. And you are the only minority city commissioner?
That's correct.
And does that affect your work being in the minority?
It does to the extent that I'm probably, I'm probably a little bit more focused on minority parties and independent voters and others because I'm not in the majority party. Feel like a responsibility to make sure we're representing everybody, you know, whether you're Greens or Libertarians or independents or all the rest. There's really nothing that I'm doing that is ideologically driven. Because we're really the umpires in this game. And we're calling balls and strikes and we're doing all of that. So it's important not to sort of pursue someone's political agenda or partisan political agenda or allow anybody else to do that as well. So I'm sure it informs my kind of approach to things, maybe. But none of us should be pursuing a partisan political agenda or trying to push. We can't count votes with one hand and push candidates with the other hand.
Right, right. So the 2020 general elections are approaching. And what is the most important information that your office wants to provide to the constituents?
I would say it is, if you are interested in voting in this election, you should register to vote as soon as you can. If you are registered to vote and you would like to vote by mail, and I can speak about that a little bit if you want because it's new in Pennsylvania. If you are interested in doing that, you shouldn't wait. You should apply either online or with a paper application as soon as you can. Because the sooner you apply, the sooner we can send the ballot out to you when we begin sending ballots out. And the sooner you can get them back to us. So I don't know if you heard in the news, there was lots of chatter about the postal service and sort of delays in postal service delivery. And there are some tight deadlines to turn around. If somebody waits till the very last minute to apply, it's very difficult for them to get their ballot from us and to get their ballot back to us through the postal service because it's only a week. And if it's taking two to three days, then there's a good possibility if you apply on the deadline, you won't get it back to us in time. You'll get it in time, but you won't get it back to us in time. So basically, not waiting. The other thing is to really, you know, there's so much almost deafening misinformation out there about elections. Because everybody is pursuing a political objective. And our system is set up to be competitive. But it's just astounding how much I read about elections and that's repeated, that is totally wrong. So I would suggest going to the source. So our website, if you are registered voter, if you live in Philadelphia, our website is philadelphiavotes, one word, dot com. And we have a section on there for voters and how to apply, to register or vote by mail, for election boards, for all sorts of data and other information that we have out there. We want to be, put that sort of information out there and make it as accessible as possible. When I first got involved in Philadelphia politics, I remember seeing something on television about the upcoming election in, I think it would have been maybe '06. And I called the city commissioner's office because I simply wanted to know how many registered voters there are in Philadelphia. And the person who answered the phone, the first thing they said, the first thing they asked is what my party affiliation was. And the second thing they asked is why I wanted the information. And that really stuck with me and that really irritated me, you know, as a resident, as a citizen, as a taxpayer and all the rest, that I would have to do that. So that's not why I got involved in this office, not why I ran. But it's a memory that I have from getting involved. So we try to push out as much information on philadelphiavotes.com. And also, my office is pretty active and the others too, on social media, our sort of handle on Twitter is commish__schmidt. So we're always putting out data and infographics and things like that about important dates, about who's requesting ballots, about how many ballots have been requested, what the election results are, kind of all of that.
Okay. Well, that's a great segue into the next part of our conversation about let's differentiate fact and fiction. So what is the difference between a mail-in and an absentee? Is there a difference?
I always hate when I hear people say, "Great question, but I've got to say that's a great one." Because in effect, at the end of the day, there's really no difference between an absentee and a mail-in except that the only people who are eligible for an absentee ballot are people who are going to be absent from the county on Election Day or people with a physical incapacitation that they can't go to the polls to vote. However, everyone is eligible for a mail-in ballot. So mail-in ballots cover everyone. Absentees, which are essentially the same thing, are only, there's only a certain kind of narrow universe of people who are eligible. The reason why they still both exist largely is absentee ballots exist in the Constitution of Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. So when the legislature and the governor passed a whole series of election reforms at the end of last year, they couldn't get rid of absentee ballots because they're in the Constitution. So that's why we still offer them, even though, again, everybody is eligible for a mail-in ballot. But at the end of the day, it's still essentially the same thing. The process is very similar. The envelope, the email back is asking for the same information. The ballot's the same and all of that.
And the deadlines are the same?
Yes.
Okay. So...
Or there's an exception. If you're overseas and military, the ballot, as long as it's postmarked on or before Election Day, can arrive back to us basically six days, up to six days after the election. Right now, unless the legislature or courts change it, mail-in ballots, domestic mail-in ballots, mail-in ballots and domestic absentee ballots have to be back to us on or before Election Day, in our hands on or before Election Day.
So how does somebody get the mail-in ballots? Is it just mailed to a resident? Do they have to register online? What do they do?
You know, one thing that's particularly complicated about our electoral system in the United States is that every state runs elections differently. So in some states, I'm guessing about a half a dozen states, every voter is just mailed a mail-in ballot. Like if you're a registered voter, everybody just gets one. In Pennsylvania, we have a sort of almost hybrid system. To get a mail-in ballot, you have to request a mail-in ballot. And there's really two ways to do it. On our website or votespa.gov, the state's website, you can request a mail-in ballot. If you have a Pennsylvania driver's license or ID, it's very, a Pennsylvania ID or Pennsylvania driver's license, it's very easy to apply online. If you don't have a driver's license or Pennsylvania ID, you can't apply online. Essentially, that's because with your Pennsylvania driver's license or ID, the state has your signature already. Like we have your signature already on file. If you don't, you have to mail in an application to us. And those are on our website also. Under the voter tab, you can go down and select absentee and mail-in and print it out if you want. Or you can contact our office and we'll mail you one.
Okay. And what constitutes a voter ID?
For applying online, it would be a Pennsylvania driver's license or a Pennsylvania-issued identification by the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. And most people have those. So applying online, applying online is a lot easier because it's also easier and quicker for us to process the application. And it's also less likely to have data entry errors. Like you know how to spell your name. I don't necessarily know how to spell your name. And if it's handwritten, you can end up with data entry errors about your address, about a person's name, things like that. Because we're reading handwritten applications. So if they're printed and printed clearly, it's not an issue. But when people apply online, the information is more likely to be accurate because the voter themselves filled out that information.
And do you think are mail-in ballots an issue in Philadelphia?
So in the primary election, we had about 175,000 voters vote by mail-in ballot. And we had about 175,000 voters vote at the polls on Election Day. So about half of all voters in Philadelphia in the primary voted by mail-in ballot. The turnout in the general election will be a lot higher. So let's say the turnout in the general election is 600,000 or 700,000 voters. If that ratio of mail-in to in-person is the same, that means we'll be processing 300 or 350,000 mail-in ballots coming in. And that's a lot. We are now essentially preparing for two separate elections. Like I said, a hybrid system. Like some states, you vote at the polls on Election Day. Some states, you vote by mail. In Pennsylvania, you can vote by mail or vote at the polls on Election Day. And that puts a tremendous strain on our board of elections and every board of elections in the country because we can't begin opening those envelopes that the ballots are in until Election Day. So that's 300,000 envelopes, mail-in ballot envelopes. And inside those envelopes is another envelope called the secrecy envelope. And inside that secrecy envelope is the ballot. And the secrecy envelope really separates the voter from their vote. There's no one at the board of elections who's like looking at names or cares how anybody votes. We're processing hundreds of thousands of pieces of paper. But it really provides secrecy for when somebody casts their vote because the envelopes are separated. They're all, the secrecy envelopes are taken out. They're all mixed up and shuffled essentially. And then the ballots are taken out after that. But it's a massive operation.
So here's one of those things that we've been reading in the paper. Maybe we can determine if it's fact or fiction. If you do a mail-in ballot, I mean, is there any cross-checking if somebody shows up at the polling place? Maybe they're afraid to go to the polling place and they do their mail-in ballot.
Right.
What if they decide not to? I mean, how do you check off, okay, this person mailed or this one went to the polling?
So if a voter returns their mail-in ballot to us, when those ballots are received back, we scan a barcode on the outside of the envelope that tells us this voter returned that ballot. If when they applied, they included an email address, they get pinged from Department of State that says, "Hey, we got your ballot." If you don't include an email address, you don't get pinged. But if you do include it, which I would recommend, you're going to get like updates along the way. We had 40, and the reason why we know and kind of check against people doing mail-in ballots and showing up at the polls is we scan in all those mail-in ballots. And the poll books, when you vote in Philadelphia, you go in, there's a big binder in front of you. You sign. Right next to your name is also another barcode. And our clerks with something that looks almost like a grocery store scanner scans those barcodes. So it's telling us who voted at the polls. And the barcodes on the mail-in ballots are telling us who returned a mail-in ballot. So when we get a mail-in ballot scanned and we are scanning those barcodes in the poll books and it shows up that person already returned a mail-in ballot, we then, as part of the massive kind of undertaking that's involved, have to find that mail-in ballot and then void that mail-in ballot because the voter voted at the polls. And we had 40 out of, all of the voters in the primary, we had only 40 people return a mail-in ballot and show up at the polls to vote on Election Day. And we have to organize all those mail-in ballots by ward and precinct. You know, those 1703 precincts? So that when we get a mail-in ballot from Al Schmidt from the 21st Ward, 4th Division, and we see that Al Schmidt voted at the polls on Election Day, we can then go to the 21st Ward, find his mail-in ballot and void his mail-in ballot.
Understood.
And there are other safeguards in place. Those poll books that are printed. When we receive your mail-in ballot back before those poll books are printed, which is a little about 10 days or so before Election Day, your name will be removed from those poll books in the usual place where you'd sign. And they're included at the back for people who, for voters who already received their ballot back. There won't be anything to sign. You won't be able to sign to then go vote on the machine.
Okay. All right. So how do you feel the pandemic is impacting the polling places? We saw less of them in the primary. Do you think the same's going to be in the general? Or do you think you're going to be completely overwhelmed with mail-in ballots?
So yes to every question you ask. We will, the goal to the general is to have as many polling places open as possible, to have as close as possible to a regular in-person election operation on Election Day. We had a little bit more time than we did in the primary because everything was sort of falling apart in the world. The time we were, we were identifying polling places. A lot of places were hesitant to let us use their polling places in the primary that will let us use them in the general election. So we normally, like I said, have about 830. I'm hopeful we can get above 700 at least, number of polling places that we can have open and staffed. Again, every precinct in the city will have a place to vote. It's just we want to not have so many precincts co-located in fewer polling places. So we can space people apart. The polling places can be closer to where you live rather than several blocks away. It can be at the end of the block or two blocks away or walking distance. So the goal for the general is to have as many polling places open as possible and as many election board workers working as possible.
So talking about safety precautions in the polling places. So is it your office or would it be the judge of elections? Who's in charge of safety? Like, will there be sanitizer? Do you have to enter obviously with a mask? But what other precautions and who's responsible for that?
On Election Day, that polling place is run by that judge of elections. So the judge of elections, like you've mentioned, if you don't know, if others don't know, there's usually about five people on an election board. There's a judge of elections who runs that election operation at that polling place. And then something called a majority inspector, a minority inspector, a clerk, and a machine operator who sets the machine for the voter to come up. So really, on Election Day, that judge of elections runs that polling place. Not one commissioner, not three commissioners. It's the judge of elections. We provided in the primary and will in the general PPE to all the polling places. So we provided masks, gloves, other materials, hand sanitizers, all that to those polling places for not just the election boards, but for voters. We also provided enough gloves for every voter. But for voters, we also provided enough gloves for every voter. Who showed up at that polling place if they wanted to. To use a glove to, you know, hold the pen to sign the poll book or to, to vote on the machine. So we provided just an avalanche of those materials to the polling places and will in the general as well. One interesting thing is we can't, we can't require voters to wear a mask. We strongly encourage voters to wear a mask, but voting is a right. And we can't put in place or require additional. Additional requirements beyond being a registered eligible voter. So we'll put information out there, we, we, we strongly encourage it, you know, we want people to do it. But it's, it's something we cannot require.
That's interesting. Okay, so polling places, how does somebody find their polling place? If they've maybe never voted or this is their first time voting and they want to vote in person, how would they find that?
We. Whenever a polling place moves. Like we did in the primary for most of them and, and they'll be, most will be moving back in the general. About eighty some percent so far polling places are where they usually are every election in the city. As we're working our way through, so that's good. But anytime, with the exception of senior centers and. Firehouses and some other facilities, we can't use them in the general election. So we lose all of our senior centers, we lose all our firehouses and others, so some will have to move. But anytime a polling place moves, a voter will receive a notice from us, usually in the form of a voter. Your voter identification card with this sticker on it in red that says your polling place has moved. Or a postcard from us that says your polling place has moved. To alert the voter, like, hey, when you vote on election day, if you vote on election day, the polling place is at this location. Here are the hours, here's the address and all the rest. In addition, on our website. In the voter section, there's a find your polling place. Option, and if you put in your address. And you select your address from the dropdown, it'll tell you where your polling place is. Polling places are only finalized twenty days before election day. So if you go on right now and look up your address, it's possible it'll tell you. It, it won't tell you where your polling place is going to be in November. So what we want is, you know, twenty, twenty days is plenty of time to figure out where you're, where you're gonna. You're gonna vote for election day, but in, in Pennsylvania law, it gets set twenty days before election day. So the last three weeks before election day, if you go on. You can look it up or you'll get a postcard from us if your polling place is moved.
Okay, and if somebody wants to get more information about voting and. Who do they talk to and why is it important for them to go to a nonpartisan entity for the information?
Because whether it's the city commissioner's office or an organization. The committee of seventy in Philadelphia also provides election related information. That's nonpartisan, that's not political, is because those entities are not seeking to deceive you to. Bring about a certain outcome, because we don't favor or oppose any candidates or anything like that. So again, our website, philadelphiavotes.com, people can also call my office if they have questions. Which is also on the website, the, the phone number, two one five six eight six three four six four. If we can be of assistance in any way, but our website or committee of seventy's website, there's a lot of information. Out there to help people navigate through this process.
That's good. We'll put that in the chat or maybe send that out in one of our emails and. That's very helpful, thank you. Can they, can we see a sample ballot now or do we have to wait?
Unfortunately, we have to wait a little bit longer. And it's, it's a frustration because people will say, hey, I applied for a mail in ballot in July, I haven't received it yet. And that's because the ballot isn't finalized yet and the ballot isn't finalized yet, not because we're waiting around. But because third party candidates up until, up until a couple of weeks ago got to be placed on the ballot. So Green Party Libertarian candidates, people running for office that aren't Republicans and Democrats have a much later deadline to get on the ballot. And file what are called nomination papers to get on the ballot. Libertarians and Greens did that. Democrats are challenging the Green Party candidates being on the ballot. And that's been working its way through the court system. So there isn't yet a final ballot because there's a challenge to some of the candidate, the Green Party candidates on the ballot. There was a lower court ruling. Late last week and the Green Party candidate for president was kept on the ballot. The challenge is appealing to the Pennsylvania Supreme Court. So hopefully in the days ahead, immediate days ahead, we'll get a ruling on that. Once that's done, we'll be able to begin sending out ballots. The goal is to begin sending them out and I think it's a very realistic goal by mid to late, late September now at this point. To get the ballots out, which will be more than a month before election day for people to get their ballots in the mail and mail them back if you've applied already.
Okay, so let's look at the timeline and kind of back into it. We have election day. At what point people should have their mail in ballots in. Postmarked whatever, what's the drop dead date for them to get their ballots in?
Right now, and I'm sorry, sometimes I have to say right now, and that's because there are five court cases going on. The legislature in Harrisburg keeps debating another package of election reforms. So I can only tell you really what the law is right now. And the law right now is that mail in ballots have to be back to us on or before election day, which is November third. There are court cases seeking to allow. Us to count ballots that are postmarked on or before election day. If they come in, let's say, three days after, in three days after the election. But right now, mail in ballots have to be back to us on or before election day, which is November third. The other deadlines before that is the deadline to apply for a mail in ballot. Is October twenty-seventh, it is a week before the deadline to get them back. So if people wait. Because they have regular lives and they're busy and they're doing all sorts of other stuff, if people wait until the deadline. It is likely too late and unfortunately we don't set the deadline. But if, if the deadline to apply is a week before election day and that ballot has to be back to us a week later. So if you apply on the deadline and we get that ballot turned around, printed and mailed to you a day or two after you apply. And you get that ballot two to three days later and you mail it back to us two to three days later, it might arrive after election day. It's important people not wait until the totally unrealistic deadline set in the Pennsylvania election code right now. The other deadline before that is October nineteenth, which is the last day to register to vote. That's fifteen days before election day. That's also, it's also better not to wait until the deadline.
So let's talk about volunteers. And you mentioned the board of elections for each division. And there are five positions and those are elected positions within that particular community. So are there any opportunities other than those board of election. Positions if somebody wanted to volunteer?
Yeah, those, those positions on the election board are ideally elected. The judge of elections, the majority inspector and the minority inspector are ideally elected positions and they run every four years. So there's plenty of polling places in the city where people have run for those positions and they were elected to those positions. There are also plenty of polling places in the city where no one has run for those positions and there are vacancies. So on our website. In the election board section, you'll find a list of. By ward and division, whether people are elected to those positions or not. And you'll also see a link that will allow you to send us your information. If you want to work on the polls on election day and then we would determine whether there's a vacancy or not. And, because in a Pennsylvania election law, you are still currently required to. Work in your home precinct rather than work in some other precincts someplace else. So there's, there's an option to reach out to us to give us your contact information. So if we can determine if there's a vacancy there, we can reach out to you, let you know about training. And get you, get you going so that you can serve on the election board on election day. Again, they're volunteer positions, it's a very long day, but we do pay now twenty, two hundred and fifty dollars for it.
I think I got fifty bucks when I was doing. It was a long time ago.
And not only less than Pennsylvania's living wage or Philadelphia's living wages, less than minimum wage for the number of hours that you, you'd be working.
Yeah, yeah, it's a long day and, but it's, it's important and. So if you want to volunteer, I highly recommend it, you know, if there's openings, go for it. So can anybody just show up at their polling place and say, hey, I want to volunteer, what can I do?
No, I mean, you should, you should really contact us. In advance of election day. Find out, which is on our website, or you can contact our office and we can let you know, my office will let you know. If, if there are, if that board is full or not. Because we want people to take training before election day. We'll have online training available. And we're also doing kind of small, small group in-person training. Normally, under normal circumstances, we put out a list of locations, dates and times. For election board training seminars. And we might have ten people show up to one or a hundred and ten people show up to one. Under these current circumstances, we have to do it by RSVP where we're calling through the election boards. Setting up times for them to come in to receive training in smaller groups rather than, you know, a hundred people showing up. It would be a group of twenty people showing up, so we can provide space.
So we're coming up to the last fifteen minutes of our coffee talk here and I usually open it up for questions and answers and. But before I do, I always like to leave on a positive note. And just want to thank you for all your work trying to help everybody out through this. This election through pin, in twenty twenty, this pandemic election, whatever this is that we're going through here. Hopefully we can get on the other side of this, but is there anything? That GPAR and our realtor members can help going forward?
You know, one, one, we're, we're a very small city department. And. We have only so much reach when we're trying to get the word out about different election information. So we frequently rely on associations and organizations like yours. You, you, you have like a, a network of networks for getting out information to, to voters. Whether it's providing the link to our website or providing the important deadline dates. Encouraging people that if they want to vote by mail, they should apply. As early as they make that decision and when they get the ballot from us. You know, we don't want anybody to rush, but if you know how you're going to vote to complete your ballot and mail it back. You know, as soon as you get it or around the time that you get it, rather than holding on to it until it's too late to mail it back to us. Sort of relying on organizations like yours to help get that, get that word out. Is important. And something that we rely on a lot because we don't have that reach. We need kind of partners like you to reach your membership and, and the people who are paying attention. To what you're doing and, and other, other organizations are doing. To be informed, also about finding your polling place. You know, if you want to plan for mail in ballot, you go here, don't wait. If you want to vote in person on election day, here's where you can find where your polling place is.
I think that's great. We're happy to help. We'll definitely get that word out. It's very important. That people understand the facts and I really appreciate you joining me on my coffee talk.
Oh, of course, thank you.
Having this conversation, it was very enlightening and I hope everybody learns something new about voting and get out there and vote. So thank you for that.
Yes, and I want to thank you again, not only for your, your service in the past on the election board. But others who are on this, on this Zoom call. Who, who have served on the election board or will serve in this coming election, election day. Voters, it all comes down to those election boards that we're talking about on election day. So that people can vote in person at the polls if they choose. It's all kind of down to a handful of your, your neighbors who are making election day happen. And I'm grateful for that.
Thank you. Alright, Matt, so he's been monitoring the, the chat. He might have a few questions in there. Go ahead, Matt.
Alright Commissioner, thank you very much. We will make sure that we send out messaging to our membership about various deadlines. It's one of the things that we stress very heavily with our association that it's really important to be active. If we just go ahead and we look at city hall and what goes on in city council. Real estate matters are always part of the conversation there. So just from that kind of standpoint, it really makes a lot of sense for our folks to be actively engaged in, in. The easiest thing, which is being registered to vote and then going and actually voting, whether it's now by mail or at the polling place. So it's part of one of the things that we are always pushing on our members. So we will make sure that we amplify your message that you gave to us today to our members over the ensuing weeks leading up to the election. We've had a few questions come into the chat, sent to me, vote publicly as well as like directly. Question about the mail, vote by mail option, which is a new, new thing here for us. Is that just for this election or will that sunset at some point?
No, the Pennsylvania legislature, Republican House and a Republican Senate. And a Democratic governor signed a, a package of election reforms at the end of last year. And mail in ballots are an important part of that, but it's only one part of it. So. Beginning in this last primary was the first election where mail in voting was possible. And it, it, it was not passed related to the COVID situation. It was completely independent of that, but now it's not just for this election. It's, you know, this election and all elections moving forward unless, unless the legislature and a governor decide to change that again down the road. Another change as part of that election package was ending straight ticket voting. So this election, this general election will be the first election where voters won't be able to. Just select straight ticket and what I mean by that is in Pennsylvania, in Philadelphia. You have a whole kind of full face ballot. Our voting machines now look like giant iPads. That print a, you know, ink on paper ballot so the voter can verify it. But there used to be an option on our machines in all counties in Pennsylvania to select straight ticket. So people would choose straight Democratic or straight Republican. That option is gone now. So voters can still vote for, if they want to vote for only candidates in one party, they can. They just need to go down the list of candidates. That's part of this last group of, this last batch of election reforms. This will be the first election where that is happening. And, and some of the deadlines and things like that changed, but mail in voting is unless the law changes again down the road. It's with us to stay.
Okay, so when can voters expect for the mail in ballots to arrive in their mailboxes?
So the goal right now is once we get the ballot certified by the Pennsylvania Department of State. And we know the resolution to the challenge the Green Party candidates on the ballot. Will begin printing them, we haven't printed them yet because we don't know what the ballot is gonna, who the candidates are going to be on the ballot. And mailing them out and the goal is to have them mailed out in late September.
So we have a few folks here in our chat, some of our members who will be working polling places.
I saw that.
Yeah, they sound like they're excited, so, and also to send more PPE, so. You never have too much of a, of a protective thing there, as well as we're getting some thanks to you. And, and the work that you've done and the information that you're sharing.
Thank you. I'll pass that along to my team as well.
Please, please do that. We know, we know you're the face of the operation, but it's always the, the people working behind the scenes that. Help you do your job and, and it's a total clean team collaborative effort. Speaking of collaborative. Where does the commissioner's office come into play with the district attorney's office? Where does the commissioner's office come into play with the district attorney's office? When we get to Election Day, stuff pops up at the polling place. I know they assemble a work group that's tasked with focus just on that on Election Day. What's the interplay between your shop and that shop?
Yeah, since, since I came into office in two thousand and eleven, starting in two thousand and twelve, moving forward, we've been working. Very closely with the district attorney's office. So when there are voting irregularities or concerns about the integrity of the election. We notify the district attorney's office. Of any. Irregularities that we identify for them to investigate and determine whether to prosecute or not. We have had more than a dozen, almost two dozen cases that we've referred to them. Where they have indicted people and gotten guilty pleas for. Related to election irregularities since I came into office. And we also just had one from the US Attorney's Office as well. But they put together a few years ago and we work closely with them, an Election Day Task Force. And that's because when there's a dispute at your local election board. That sort of the boards that Stephanie I have been talking about. Political. They're frequently with the just. Office calls Hatfield and McCoy situations. Where one neighbor is fighting with another neighbor. Or 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 sometimes they are political in nature because someone is inside the polling place. Maybe one of those election board workers is wearing a shirt that says, vote for this candidate or don't vote for that candidate. We rely on the district attorney's office and their task force on Election Day to go to that polling place, to approach them to say. Knock it off, you're not allowed to do that. And if you don't comply, we're going to come back here when the polls are closed and take you to see a judge. So we rely on the district attorney's office a lot and 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 we have been very grateful for their assistance. And in trying to make Election Day run as smoothly as possible for voters.
So I want to wrap up with one last thing. So how many registered voters are there in Philadelphia?
There's a little over a million.
I think we're frozen. Commissioner, are you still there?
Yeah.
We're frozen at a million.
That was a shocking number, I think it put him in shock. All those mail ins, he's going to have to count.
Holy smokes. So I think the commissioner is frozen, but anyway, folks, I think we'll probably wrap up on on that that note. Councilman Alan Dom just weighed in and said Commissioner Schmidt does a great job, thank you, so thank you, Commissioner Schmidt, thank you to all of our GPAR members for hopping on here today. Stephanie, excellent job, any closing thoughts?
No, I think it's, it's going to be a very important election because of the the dynamics of the the polling and the absentee and the mail in. And I think it was great explanation of the difference between the two, so deadlines are important, if you're going to mail in, mail them in. And hopefully everybody feels confident that there's none of this double voting that we've been hearing about in the news, so. It looks like there's checks and balances and cross referencing and go out and vote, if you're not going to go in person, mail it in, it's really, really important.
Pun intended, all right, have a great day, everyone, thanks Stephanie, thanks Commissioner Schmidt. Keep an eye on your inbox for future coffee talk. Dates and times that we'll have coming up, all right, take care, everyone.
All right.
Bye bye.
Bye.